Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this special Continuum of Care Advisory Committee meeting. I believe that the agenda was sent out. This is a follow-on to our original meeting about the emergency housing vouchers. We'd asked folks for, sort of given an overview of what the program is about. We asked for some feedback and guidance, but there hadn't been enough time in that meeting to, you know, to elicit a lot of feedback. So I had sent around a survey tool. I'm happy to take a, take a, take a look at that. But let's, let's go ahead and take the, the role for, for the meeting. So let's see, let's say, I don't, I don't actually have the role. If Carrie or Maria could have the role and go through that. And then I believe we also had an individual who's doing the, the land acknowledgements. And I think that was Christie, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Okay, great. So Maria, why don't you take role today?
Certainly. Tamara Bowman.
Present.
Thank you. Jessie Bennett.
Hi, it's Bennett, Jessie Bennett, present.
Thank you, Jessie Bennett. Kelly Brown.
Here.
Jenna Burgoyne.
Here.
Dan Burton.
Present.
Thank you. Leece Castro. Okay. Shanae Colston.
Here.
Thank you. Brianna Franco.
Present.
Thank you. Marvin Patrell.
Here.
Thank you. Maristel Hopper. Benjamin Nish.
Hey, buddy, I'm here.
Thank you. Nosh Jimmy Nightgun. Okay. Noreen Hill Anida. Linda Peoples. Okay. Forgive me, Christina, how do you pronounce your last name? Christina. Okay. Ravin Tetsuda. Karen Taylor.
I'm here.
Thank you. Sheri Tillman. Okay, I think that's everyone.
Everyone, I'm here too. Kristy Hamilton.
I'm here too, Leece Castro.
Oh, thank you so much.
And so Maria, how many people are present?
I show. Twelve.
I think we've got 13, so we'll just do a quick recount. So that's Marvin, Jessie, Christie, KT, Reverend Brown. Christina did come in. I see Christina available. Jenna, men, or Ben, Brianna, Tamara, Dan, Leece, Shanae. So I think that means we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. So could I ask Christie to, if you don't mind, offering us a landing?
I would be glad to. Thank you, Peter. I am Kristy Hamilton. I am a Cinnabon from Port Peck, Montana, and I'm honored to be part of our advisory board. I'm a little distracted at the moment as I drive through Seattle, native lands, I come to the Duwamish people. I'm seeing our homeless people, our people who are without shelter right now. I just drove by Recovery Cafe. They're holding a vaccination clinic and having meals prepared for everybody. I'm also seeing great huge buildings being built. Hopefully, some of those buildings are for our unsheltered neighbors. I see people working. I see people in the sunshine. I see people still not with their needs met. And in Indian territory and Indian country, we share what we have and our resources, and that's native way. And as we hold our meeting on Duwamish land today, and all our other Native American relatives and relations, let's hold in our heart and our minds and our intent that that's our purpose here is to find housing so that everybody, everybody deserves a place to live, and that that's our purpose as this board, is to try to find equity in this inequitable system. And I appreciate the chance and the opportunity to be here, and we can go forward from there. Thank you, everybody. Thank you all my relations.
Thank you, Christie. Okay, so we have, and I appreciate you're, you're doing that while you're driving and, and driving safely. So we, we do, so this is a continuation of the emergency housing voucher discussion that we started. I'm Peter Lynn. I'm the Chief Program Officer for the Regional Homelessness Authority. We have a great opportunity in this allocation of resource from the federal government to, to house folks. These are key rental assistance vouchers. And the task in front of us is to think about how we, as a community, want to prioritize folks for this. We went over the, the sort of frame and structure of this program last time, and I'm, I'm happy to do a quick review. If folks want some more information or open any questions on the emergency housing voucher program and the mechanics of it. I'm also happy to sort of assume that we've covered that topic in conversation and, and can, can move directly to the, to the question at hand, which is thinking about priorities. So folks, you know, maybe I'll just give a second if anybody has any questions or would like a quick recap. I'm happy, happy to do that.
Can we get like the two-minute recap? I love it because I missed part of the last meeting. Sorry.
Sure, no worries. Okay, you're gonna have to hold me to two minutes. So two, 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 so go, right? These are very similar to, like and similar to Section Eight vouchers. They were allocated to public housing agencies across the country in response to the COVID pandemic and the economic fallout from that. They are for, they are part of the American Rescue Plan Act. Locally, there were three housing authorities that got an allocation. King County Housing Authority and Seattle both got sizable allocations, total of about 1,200 vouchers, 1,200-plus vouchers together. And Renton Housing Authority got, got 50 as well. These are, these have some very similar features to regular Section Eight in the sense of the rental amounts, some of the eligibility things, and, but they're, they're unique in some other ways. One is that they are targeting people experiencing or at risk of homelessness. Second is that there has to be an agreement for the use of these vouchers between the Continuum of Care and the Housing Authority. So unlike almost any other voucher, these have to come through coordinated entry. And they have to have, there has to be an agreement between us, you know, between the Continuum and the PHAs and how to run this, and how to run this program, right? So it's a combined decision-making process, and they are strongly encouraging us to take into account people at risk from COVID. They are strongly encouraging us to take into account past and historical disparities in allocation of resources and under-resourced communities, and, and look at, at the distribution of this resource from an equity perspective. And to, they're strongly encouraging us as, you know, communities to consult with people who lived experience as we, as we think about that.
Two minutes. Spot on.
Okay, so I want to, I missed, so I don't have the agenda open in front of me, so I appreciate the prompt from Carrie to remind us that we want to take, we want to offer an opportunity for public comment, and then we'll dive into the discussion. So let me just do that. If there's, if there is any public comment that would, that folks would like to raise and make public comment, we'll make that available now.
I guess my concern is, since this is a special meeting, how much time did the public actually get to know that this was happening? And again, what forms was that information given to them? This continues to be a struggle in these meetings. We always ask for public comment. There's no comments, but maybe one the whole time we've had it. And personally, again, I think it's our obligation to be spreading this word, and we haven't done enough to do that.
I appreciate that, that feedback, Shanae.
Can I just very quickly completely hear you, understand that we need to find other ways for people to get to provide public comments? And I think maybe emails or comment boxes on the website are some of the ways that we might be able to do that going forward. We are still getting set up. I know it is frustrating that we don't have all this stuff yet. So thank you for continuing to raise that. It is something that we are thinking about.
Well, Anne, I wanna, I don't want to cut you off, but every time I've mentioned this, people keep bringing up the internet. And I'm gonna tell you that my people who are homeless, sleeping on the street, don't have internet access. So when you guys keep telling me that over and over, it's useless information, because the people that we're serving, the people that need the help the most, the most vulnerable, don't have that access.
Well, maybe there's a way that we can tap into our outreach workers, but again, like, we are, like, really just getting our timing down for this. And I apologize that we were, I think we just barely met the public meeting requirements on 24 hours notice here. It is a special meeting. I'm gonna ask for your patience.
So there's a 24-hour notice. Is that your answer to the question that I had then, that there is only a 24-hour notice to the public that this was happening?
My answer to your question is that we are working on it, and I'm asking for your patience.
So can anybody tell me for this meeting, okay, so my question still stands, for this meeting, how long did the public have before they knew it was happening?
It was updated on Tuesday, so three and a half days.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you. Okay, let's go.
Okay. I definitely appreciate the, the feedback. Claudette Thomas would like to, to comment. If you could put Claudette in queue.
I'm happy to run public comment. Give me just a second, Peter. There's a, a process that we have and some language around it. So before we start that, we're gonna go ahead and take public comment now. We've set aside 10 minutes to hear from members of the public. If you wish to comment and have not yet typed your name or raised your hand. And if you've not yet typed your name and sit into the chat window or raise your hand, please do so now. If you're calling in, which I don't think we have any folks calling in, but you can raise your hand on the phone using star nine. Secondly, each individual is given two minutes to comment, and I will go ahead and call on individuals in the order in which they've been provided. When you've reached the two minutes, please finish your comment, and we'll call on the next person. And we'll close public comment about 10 minutes from now. And so since public comment is currently open, you can type your name or chat in the window. And as of right now, we do have one person who's raised their hand. That's Claudette Thomas. Give me just a moment, and I'll enable your microphone. And Claudette, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and speak, and your time will start at that time.
Good afternoon. My name is Claudette Thomas. I'm from the Anne with Capital Community Services. I wanted to know, are these vouchers just gonna be for CNA people?
The, these vouchers are for people experiencing homelessness or at imminent risk of homelessness, and they have to have a referral through the coordinated entry system. So depending on, on, you know, how that works in various communities, it can take, take multiple forms. It does not necessarily imply that people have to have a prioritization according to, to the way that the, that the CEA prioritization has worked. There, there are ways that we could think about reflecting on referrals through coordinated entry. And in addition to that, we are, we are strongly encouraged, and the eligibility for these vouchers does make space for people who are fleeing domestic violence, intimate partner violence, dating violence, human trafficking, and stalking. So there is a, there is a strong encouragement to, to provide connections for, for, for people who are fleeing violence.
Okay, thank you. When are the vouchers gonna be available?
So they would be, they'd be allocated to the housing authorities, I think, as early as July. We do need to submit our agreement with the housing authorities by the 31st of July, which we're, we, we have every confidence that we can meet that. But they should be available starting July and then for the next several months, probably.
Last question. Is this open to all ages? Because last time the vouchers came out, the older people couldn't get it. So these vouchers open to all ages?
They're open to all, to, to all ages, except of course, a minor could not sign, could not sign a contract. So anyone over the age of 18. There is, there are a couple of restrictions. One is that at least one member of the household has to be, has to have documentation status. So has to have eligible residency status in the country. But, but with regard to eligibility, there's no restriction on age, except of course, minors couldn't, couldn't sign the contract themselves.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. At this time, I do not see any other hands raised or comments in the chat for folks to sign up for public comment. That being said, if anyone did not have an opportunity to provide comment and would like to still, we'll leave the chat window open for the next 10 minutes. And at this time, we will conclude public comment.
Claudia, I just want to say thank you for showing up and showing out, and your questions, they're highly important to us. And I hope to see you at future meetings as well. Thank you.
My hand is raised. My hand's been raised. I don't know why anybody can't see it. But I wanted to comment on the patience that was asked and the tone it was asked. I personally didn't appreciate the tone. I think that what Shanae was asking was dead on. I think that the processing and the analysis that we take a whole lot of time to do is inexcusable. And I also feel that the public definitely needs to know about the decisions we're making, about the choices we're making, and that they need to have an allotted amount of time to be aware. And they don't have access to internet, and they don't use their phones like I'm doing right now for meetings, because usually they're having to call case manager, DSHS, social security, doctors and whatnot. And they just don't have the time to use their personal cellphone to come to a meeting, lest alone know the meeting code or be invited to the meeting. So I am in agreement with Shanae Colston on the urgency of the people on the streets being the most valuable people in this room, because that is who we are working for. We're not working for any racist system or continuum of racism in the system. We are about the theory of change, and I just want you guys to, to, to respect that. Thank you.
Who's that? Is that Mark Singleton? Okay, I, I appreciate that, the feedback, Linda and, and Shanae, and certainly welcome the comments and questions from, from the public. I, I do want to, I want to emphasize that while this was a special meeting, that in, you know, the, the issue in front of us is that there's a, there's a sort of timeliness crunch on coming up with a prioritization schema and working out an agreement with the public housing agencies. We definitely want to provide multiple avenues of input and to provide, you know, lengthy periods of notice. So I, I'm, I take the, I take the, the feedback really seriously, and I, I hope it, I hope it did not sound like I was dismissing that. It is, it is vitally important, and the one challenge that we're facing in this particular situation is that we have, you know, like a timeliness, speed issue that's, that's very, very pressing. So, you know, trying to, trying to, trying to achieve both those goals. But I, you know, your, your feedback is, is spot on and very welcome. So I, I hope that I did not sound that, that way.
Can you tell me why there's a timeline? Why, I mean, why is there always a time crunch? It's always a rush. It's always a flurry of papers and a bunch of long-winded talking about nothing, talking in circles. It's always been that. That is the system. That's how it works. It's meant to disorientate the people and not give them the knowledge they need. And if they do, they don't give it to them in time. So it's always a game, and I'm just telling you that we're up on the game, and we're calling BS on it. Thank you.
So in this case, this new allocation of vouchers came to all the communities, you know, in, and they asked us to sign these agreements, come up with a priority set. It's first off, it's a new resource. They've never done this before. So, you know, there's no template for it, and there was, you know, very little notice that it was coming. The second thing is they asked us to sign this agreement with the housing authorities and the Continuum of Care, you know, within, within a very short period of time. So we're supposed to sign this by July to, to accept these vouchers, so that, you know, we, we just, you know, we got this new resource. They asked us to do a completely new process for it and to think about things differently. And, you know, just from the perspective of the new Regional Homelessness Authority, we're all just, you know, we're landing in these new jobs pretty, pretty quickly. There's a ton of other things that are going on for the authority. So from our perspective, there's a little bit of a scramble, and it, you know, unfortunately for us, there's, you know, you've been in this committee for a while. For us, you know, there's like no procedures, like it's all pretty darn new. So I, I do apologize for that, and that's not, you know, that's just explaining that, you know, for us, it's a bit of a scramble. And I, and I completely understand what you're saying, that like everything sort of shows up that way. In this case, we were given a very short timeline by the federal government to, you know, accept these and, and to hammer out this agreement, so.
Could I, could I offer? I'm, I'm glad this has been raised, but I also am just looking at the time and don't want to lose more time to actually have a voice to weigh in. And I, I do believe my comrades here, and I can maybe have an impact that Shanae is looking for. And I get the time turnaround. I work for an org that's getting federal dollars right now, and we've been screwed every which way. So I understand that pressure, but I also just want to take time to actually have the input. No disrespect to anybody.
Okay, so I, I will move back to the agenda. So if we, you know, having closed public comment, we'll look at emergency housing voucher discussion. I obviously introduced that, and, you know, there's some, there are some feedback that we got. So I sent this request for, for folks to sort of give feedback and fill in a form. Were nine members of the committee who responded and listed out various perspectives on, on priorities that, that they'd like to, like to see within this, within this, you know, within this program. I want to, you know, I can present that back in a couple of different ways. You know, if folks are comfortable sharing what they, what they said, I, I'm happy to send that to everyone. I'm also happy to take the names off and send it to everyone. But for now, I'd like to, to sort of share out what, you know, share out what, what, the sort of summary of the feedback, if that's all right with everybody.
That'd be great. You specifically asked for the top three, so some people may have given more or less, and then obviously all of us participated. And so those of you that did not participate, I'm gonna ask you to step up today and voice your opinion so it can be counted. This is the time and now, especially if we're on a time crunch. I'm gonna take your silence as you're gonna be okay with the majority at the end of this meeting if you don't speak up today. Nine people, that's crazy.
Yeah, that was, that was what we got. So nine folks, nine folks sent in. So the, looking across the, the nine folks, the, the main priority that came up, 90% of everybody said BIPOC folks need to be prioritized for this. So you, you know, definitely using the COVID prioritization that we had that put BIPOC folks at the top. That was, that was the, you know, one of the top things. The other was families with children, especially unsheltered, was another one that, that came across from, just about everybody mentioned families with children in, in there. So that was 100%, if you looked across there. Unsheltered was mentioned as a, as a priority focus for, for 90% of the people, or 67% of the people who responded said among their top categories were unsheltered, and, and unsheltered on some level was mentioned by, by, by most. Survivors came up quite a bit as a priority focus, especially survivors with, with children and survivor households or survivor families. People with disabilities was mentioned in several different ways. Some folks highlighted those with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Others focused on all folks with disabilities. Some folks focused on families that have children and are suffering, you know, serious medical, medical illness or complexities in, in, within the constellation of, of the disabilities that were raised. There were a significant number of folks who, who, who raised, not the top priority, but within the, within the first few was the recently, those recently homeless and under rapid rehousing programs and permanent supportive housing that were at risk of, of losing their housing. So that was definitely a theme that came up several times. There were a few mentions for transgender LGBTQIA folks. And those were, those were among the primary categories that were raised. Youth, young adults came up, you know, like I said, there was probably, like, almost everybody said families with children. I think, I think it was pretty clear that that's, you know, sort of across the board, and, you know, those living in tents, those living in vehicles, wherever folk, wherever those folks are. And, and the other one that was just across the board was, was BIPOC folks. In some cases focusing on Native elders, in some cases focusing on black people, but, you know, BIPOC was the, was, you know, across the board. So that was, that's a sort of quick summary of the feedback from, that was, that was submitted. And like I said, if folks are comfortable sharing it, I can also just take the names off of who wrote what. Then there were a few questions that came in. I'm sorry.
Did you take the names off and pass it out?
No problem.
I don't really mind if the names are, my name is on. I don't, I don't mind.
Okay. Okay, fair enough. So I think Karen, Karen, Jessie had their, had their hands up. So Karen, I think your hand went up first.
Yeah, I didn't fill out any questionnaire online or anything like that. But I would like to, if I have a chance to vote, I'd like to vote for single adults out here. I think that children, families with children, they have more, it seems to me, more chances at, at receiving housing than do singles, single adults. For me.
Thank you. Jessie, your hand was.
Yeah, I didn't hear some of my feedback in there about people with criminal, BIPOC, primarily BIPOC folks with criminal legal system impact and exposure and barriers. So often the only one in most of these tables trying to champion people that are impacted by mass incarceration and that they get left, left out of all resources all the time and are the last tidbit, you know, to get access. So I really want that in there as strongly as possible, that people that are impacted by criminal courts and jails and police exposure somehow get prioritized for these resources.
Majority of those are single adults as well.
Yep. Or have kids that they're not currently in their custody because of their legal system exposure.
Right, right. So on that, I just want to, I want to point out a couple of things. And that, you know, one thing I want to check with this group and your experience with the public housing agencies is what, you know, what does it look like from the perspective? and your experience with the public housing agencies is what, you know, what does it look like from the perspective of getting folks leased in those, uh, in those, you know, in those programs, right? So getting folks through the voucher program, are they screening for criminal backgrounds and so forth? Cause, cause I will say that this program specifically reduced the criminal background look back for these vouchers to the minimum. So if housing authorities must use their least restrictive guidance, and they are strongly encouraged to use no criminal background screening, except for those that are mandatory for the voucher program. And just to remind folks, if people are subject to, uh, state sex offender registration, they are barred from the section A program, including this one. And anybody who's been convicted of the manufacture of methamphetamine in federally assisted housing is also restricted. That doesn't show up that much, but registered sex offenders does show up on, on, to some degree. But they are specifically encouraging housing authorities to use both their least restrictive and then, you know, to the extent that for this population, since people who are experiencing homelessness have been disproportionately impacted by criminal justice involvement, has a, they have asked us as communities to look at reducing those barriers to the minimum. So that is definitely something that we, as the continuum, want to say to the public housing agencies, like do not, you know, use, don't, you don't even use, like whatever you think of as your low barrier, you go to the federal minimum, which is nothing. Now, obviously we can't control what happens in the rental market. Landlords may still bar folks and, um, that is, that is still their choice. But from the perspective of issuing vouchers, we should be, we should be leaning really toward, um, folks who have been disproportionately impacted by, by mass incarceration. That's, that's a, that's a, a response to that. But I appreciate your, I appreciate that feedback. And we definitely, this is definitely something we want to do. Ben, I think I saw your hand.
Yeah, um, so I was just, uh, I was, in order for us to be able to, to prioritize, I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about, um, what the plan is for attaching services, uh, to people who get the vouchers. Um, and maybe if you could talk a little bit about the, the issues with keeping the vouchers in the community past 2023. And I don't know if this, this group has had any, um, information about that yet.
Okay. So both good points. One issue with these vouchers is that while they do have these really powerful features of encouraging us to think for, focusing on people experiencing homelessness, focusing on an agreement with the, the continuum. And they also importantly brought with them some housing search financial assistance. So people have, for example, security deposit assistance, utility turn on assistance. So there's, there is some money for that, which was great. Cause even VASH didn't carry those funds. However, there was no service funding for this allocation. So other than the funding for like housing search assistance and, and, you know, financial assistance and move in, it's, this doesn't carry case management. It does not carry the supportive services that, um, like a continuum grant did, or for example, even our rapid rehousing does. So that's a challenge, right? We as a community don't have a, a clear way of matching people who have a housing resource to a service slot that, you know, pairs them up in really effective ways. So, um, you know, there's a, there's a gap there and we need to figure out how to do that. So we are in dialogue with other partners and city and, city and county funding on some of those things. I think we're going to need to listen to what the service provider community can offer from a, from a case management perspective and how they can, you know, how they can match the services that they've got with, with folks. And then we are going to have to think about, um, you know, we're going to have to think about other ways of, of getting those services to folks and maybe thinking about it. I wanted to bring forward to this group one, uh, category that was not mentioned. So there, like I said, there were some folks who were very concerned about those in rapid rehousing who are at risk of, of losing their housing. And actually, interestingly, that group of people in rapid rehousing, because rapid rehousing does have case management, that's a group that would carry with them a service component that would, that would meet the, the issue that Ben just raised. But the other piece is, uh, the lived experience coalition was, uh, kind of coalesced on a recommendation that we focus on, uh, people who are in permanent supportive housing and have stabilized their lives and are, are ready to move on into community. And those who wish to do so get an opportunity to, to use these vouchers, move out of that supportive housing unit. That would then free that unit up for somebody who is experiencing unsheltered homelessness and has, you know, high service needs and then could use that, that PSH slot. So there was a, you know, the suggestion there was maybe we move people out of a service enriched unit who don't need those services, but do need to move on and do need the financial help to move on. And then we have a service slot for them. So that was one of the proposals that came from lived experience. Kristi.
Yeah, thank you. That's, uh, this all sounds wonderful, but you brought up an issue to me that kind of scares me, but I'm going to ask the tough questions, Peter, because you're the guy to ask them too. All goes well and good. We, we get these 3,000 vouchers and we place them in everybody's hot little hands. And yes, we've done our job. And there's no place for them to go because there's no housing. Um, do they have first, do they have an expiration date? And if so, is that something that we can work with? Uh, the entities involved to get past that? Because as a former recipient of a voucher, it was, and this was years ago before the housing crunch became as, as tight as it is now. And even having a deadline and doing as much work as I did, it was nearly impossible, even with a case manager to find a place. So if there is a deadline, how are we going to be able to, uh, go beyond that or work with that? And secondly, are we still looking at dialoguing about changing the definition of what a housing unit is? Um, I think Christina brought it up last meeting about, uh, shared housing, that veterans work well in groups, Native Americans work well in groups, uh, maybe foster kids work well in groups. So we can, we can get rental units that can have housing groups or, or home groups, as it were, and utilize places. And will, again, like you say, that's out of our hands, but I, I can't help but think, great, here are people with vouchers in hands and no landlords to accept them. And on a second note, uh, not only are felonies issues for bars to rentals, as it's been brought up, uh, by Jesse, but also prior evictions. If you've got a prior eviction record, you might as well just keep living in your tent. I mean, I'm sorry, but that's reality, especially when even though a landlord has to take first come, first served, they don't have to, if you know what I mean. So I just want to bring those tough questions up. Sorry, Peter, to ruin your Friday, but thanks for letting me say.
No, 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 that's, that's, A, that's what we're here for, right? Just to wrestle, like if we're not wrestling with, with the ease, this is not softball. This is, all of this is going to be hardball. So the two, so you asked three questions. You asked for two and you got three. So it's quite a deal. So voucher expiration. On, on these vouchers, there's a couple of different things about these vouchers. One is, like I said, with regard to the framing to the housing authorities, they asked housing authorities out of the box to give a, a maximum amount of time for voucher issuance. So whatever flavor you, they're typically used to doing, they're supposed to issue for 120 days out of the box. So that's a three month search window for folks. Now, that can also be extended. So the voucher issuance itself is supposed to come with like, you know, a good solid amount of search, and then that can also be extended. Obviously, you know, we want to get things done, but like, let's, let's get, you know, the, let's get, give people a good solid chance. And then, um, that was your first one. So to, to, there's another piece of these vouchers particularly that I wanted to raise, which is that you have to have issued and leased them all by September of next year. So not this year, so the meter's running. We have about 15 months to get them all into circulation. If we don't have them in circulation at that point, they could take it back. And like we, you know, so we definitely want to have everybody in a unit by that period, but that's a year, you know, a year and change from now. So we got some. Second thing was about housing search and the challenge with finding units. So, um, you know, I talked to the fellow who runs, uh, Housing Connector. He is aware of this. He is queuing up landlords. He says he's got a few hundred, you know, landlord units in, in queue, three, three or 400. He's going to diligently pull together as many, and those are going to be available to this, you know, to this function. I think the point that was raised earlier is, uh, about shared housing is really spot on. I have raised that with the housing agent, the, of the housing authorities. I have raised that with, I raised that with, um, ScoutChim. And if I mess up his name, please forgive me. Um, I raised that, and I've been talking to some of the providers about it. I feel like, okay, it's not the answer for everybody. Okay. And that's, okay, that's fair. But for some people, I think it's a really good idea. And but the, the key is like, how do we pull it off? In places where folks have told me that they have a hard time with shared housing, it's often because they rent the house and then they try to match make between people who don't particularly want to live together. And that's a tough one. But if you have a group of people who know each other, say they are in camp together and they're used to watching each other's back, or they've been living, you know, in cars near each other and keeping an eye, you know, they jumpstart each other, keep an eye, all that stuff, then that may be a good fit for a shared housing. So I feel like this is an area where we need to figure out, okay, who rents the house? How do we divide it up and all those other things? But I, I mean, so I pitched this idea to the housing authorities and to other folks, just to try to like, because the other thing I think about is in our housing market, there are three to five, six bedroom homes that are for rent and not like, you know, an unlimited number of, you know, one bedroom how, you know, apartments and so forth. So those are all things that are going in the mix. And I would, you know, I don't feel like that's a barrier. It's no, housing authorities don't like it because it's administratively, it's a pain in the neck. And I, I, I can understand that, but like, that's on us as the administrators, not on people who, who might want to choose that. And by the way, it's cheaper. So like, that's not a bad thing either. Sherry, you had your hand up. Oh, wait, no. Uh, prior evictions. I think ScoutChim's model helps navigate some of that. And, you know, those are all things that we're going to have to figure out with, uh, you know, with the landlords. I mean, we need landlords, you know, it is not going to be a barrier with the housing authorities. They are not supposed to look at those kinds of issues. And by the way, there is, they can use, if, one of the other barriers that we found was folks who owe the housing authority money. You know, for like having, you know, bounced out in previous ways, that can be a barrier. They, we can use that financial assistance money to pay those kinds of debts off and get people, you know, through those kinds of barriers. So there are ways of getting through that, but prior evictions is a problem, but that's why we need landlords who are open to this. And the, you know, the voucher actually supports people, you know, having the ability to pay the rent because that's what the voucher does. So, sorry, Sherry, that, you're, you're.
Yes, um, I was going to say, uh, the good idea of connecting, uh, like you said, with some of the other agencies, because I work for, uh, I'm, you know, intake manager at Mary's Place, and we pay, uh, evictions, like we look at that first before, you know, because we know that's a barrier for families. And there's other agencies as well that can do that. So I think connecting with other agencies as well is helpful for the families with evictions because, you know, they have the three months and you said it can be extended. So I think that's, that's one of the good areas that would be able to help families or, you know, needing to get into shelters, or excuse me, into having, getting the voucher.
Thanks. Uh, Ben, I think you're, was there some?
Yeah. Sorry. Yeah. I just wanted to, to uh, dive into this a little bit more, just the, the, the 22, 2022 expiration piece. Um, so I've been involved in some other communities that are also having these conversations. And, um, so just so folks know, so typically, um, you know, Washington state, our, our housing authorities get like a certain number of vouchers. And, uh, someone gets that voucher and they get to have it for, you know, as long as they want, um, as long as they need it, and they can move with it and all of those great things. Uh, and when they no longer need it, best case scenario, or if, if they, it doesn't work out for them, they're not able to use it. Uh, worst case scenario, um, at least that voucher gets to stay in the community and be given to someone else. Um, that is not true with these vouchers. Uh, at the end of 2022, um, any vouchers that are not utilized are gone to our community forever. Peter, is that correct?
No, 20, it's, if you don't use them by 29, 20, September 23. So, 23. So we have a solid, we have a solid year. Now, HUD, HUD is looking at this really diligently. And if we don't use, if we like wait till the end, they could come in and say, listen, you're not using them. You know, we're going to, we're going to take them. So if we look, you know, if we look like we're not on it, they might come in earlier than that and say, you know what? You know, there's other communities that have used all of theirs. You're not using them. They could take them away. But you know, that's not, we're not going to let that be the case. However, you are right that at, after September of 23, if a household leaves the voucher program for whatever reason, let's say the person passes away, the voucher doesn't go back into recirculation at that point, it goes back to HUD. Now, they could change their mind, they could change the rules. I'm hoping that that was just a budget gimmick this year so that they didn't have to account for the full cost. But that, that isn't the case. So it's, but they get to stay on the program for 10 years. So the voucher, their, their assistance will persist, but if they go away, you can't, you can't reissue the voucher the way you would with standard voucher.
And yeah, exactly. And so the point I just want to make is that I, I, I think it's better if we can keep more vouchers in the community. It's more housing resource. And so I just want to make sure that we're setting people up for success.
Thank you. Sorry, I guess I should unmute. Uh, let me acknowledge that Linda asked a question in chat, which is, um, will they have a landlord liaison to work with the clients? So this is where, um, like I said, this, there's this organization here, which I, which is new to me, but I feel like they're, you know, it occupies a great space called Housing Connector. And they work with the, both housing authorities and they work with quite a number of service providers. And their, their sort of role here is to help navigate with the landlord. So they're out getting landlords, persuading landlords to participate in these rental assistance programs by offering uh, some loss mitigation and just, you know, you know, working with the landlord. So there is a, um, there is a landlord liaison in that sense. However, like we said before, these vouchers don't carry case management themselves. So there's nobody to sort of walk a person through. And as a community, that's something that we're going to have to figure out. But, you know, as I think about some of these groups of folks, like if I think about the moving on category, I agree with the lived experience coalition. That's a great group of people to, to help, you know, reintegrate. And we could use that unit. On the other hand, we need, we do need somebody to help them go out into the rental market because it might, might've been quite a while since they last talked to a landlord. Uh, we, when we did a peer program like this in LA, you know, a lot of people raised their hand and then didn't utilize their vouchers, both because they didn't quite know how to search, or they, you know, folks got afraid, you know? Last time when they went out, they had to deal with a lot of racism and pushback in the market. They didn't, you know, it didn't feel safe. And like, they just didn't want to do it. So that's an area where I feel like, you know, some amount of navigation and just, you know, peer support to help folks lease up would be really helpful. Um, and, you know, but we have to think about how we get that. So, Sherry.
Yeah, um, my concern with the CEA is that, um, I had experienced when they were doing the CEA of, you know, helping families getting in and single men, single women getting to like, um, you know, like some type of housing. Um, and I mean, as far as I know, I'm still waiting, you know, because I never got a call back or anything. I did the initial like orientation years ago when me and my kids were homeless. And then I never got a call back for help. So, um, and I know a, a lot of other, uh, families that dealt with that issue. So I mean, how do we know? Cause it shouldn't take long because there's a lot of, you know, family and, uh, you know, single men, single women in need. Uh, so, I mean, how do we know that they're not going to take long with their process? This time.
I, I think it's a, it's an excellent question. And I, I will say that like, looking at this, the way that coordinated entry functions in this community is quite different from the way that we built it in Los Angeles. And I think, you know, we all collectively have a responsibility to look at the way that it functions and figure out, you know, how to make it function much, much more strongly. Cause I, I think, I mean, one of the, like, like we said, like one of the serious gaps in this model is that there's no service match for people who are, you know, prioritized. So if you, if you come to the head of the prioritization that's in coordinated entry, there's nobody whose job it is to like, okay, let's go find this person. Let's get them into, let's locate them on the street and navigate them through the process of getting them leased up and get them into housing. So that's an area where, you know, we got to figure that out. Collectively, we got to have that resource. The CEA team is a small one and they're, you know, they're, they're, they're not, you know, it's not like they have an army of, of, uh, case managers and outreach to sort of, you know, match up and peer and pair off. But that's a gap we have, right? And we got to figure out collectively how we're going to, how we're going to fix that. So you know, in this case, I feel like we are going to, we're going to need to draw on the case management, the support that exists in the provider base, and then think about ways that we can fund case management support through other mechanisms. that exists in the provider base and then think about ways that we can fund case management support through other mechanisms. Um, but I, I, I mean, I hear what you're saying and we collectively own responsibility for coordinated entry and for fixing it. Um, Karen, I saw your hand.
Yeah. Um, I was gonna say too, that, you know, I just think we just got this whole thing ass backwards. Because, you know, we got all these people in the central district flexing, buying up all the property and owning all the property and housing, but we don't hold them accountable to house our homeless. Our homeless are being shipped out of the city as fast as they can with this gentrification. People don't have a chance to find nice places to live in the city, because we don't hold the fat cat accountable. We let them flex their power and their money all over our city, buy up everything and push people out and roll over them like a steamroller. The opportunities to get housing, even with the section eight voucher are slim to none. That's why it takes so long for someone to find a place to live, because we're not holding these people that are flexing their money accountable. There should be a law for all these people that have built in this city within the last year or however many years, that they have to have a certain amount of, of beds in their building for people like that we're talking about, for our homeless. They walk in there, our homeless walk in there, even with the section eight voucher, even with the case manager, and they get told no with a smile sometimes. And they get charged for the application fee. There's all these processes that have been set up to tilt the power dynamic in the favor of the rich and of the racist, in my opinion, you know, and it's just not fair. So I'm like, we gotta turn that around if we wanna say, okay, we're gonna spend all this money, we're gonna give, give, give to our homeless and we're gonna make sure they're, yeah, over in Auburn. Yeah, way out in Tacoma. Yeah, way over there. But the people that were born here in Seattle and the natives and the indigenous of Seattle ought to be able to find housing right here. And it ought not be some rundown, nasty, roach infested funk house. It ought to be somewhere nice. So I, I, I just wanted to bring that up and say, it's an elephant in the room. It's always in the room and I'm always gonna talk about that.
I appreciate that. And you're not, you're never gonna get an argument from me that, that landlords, um, have a responsibility to, to contribute back to housing folks. So I, I mean, our market approach is really challenging and I'll, I'm gonna leave it at that. But on this particular program, we have about five minutes. Um, I want, you know, are there any folks who haven't had a chance to speak yet and wanna, you know, wanna, so Tamara, you're raising your hand. Oh, you know what? I didn't see your, your other hand. So thank you for the wave.
No problem, no problem. Um, I, I, I love working with vouchers. I've had a lot of success with, um, getting folks' families housed with the vouchers. And so I'm wondering if, if one of the housing authorities would be willing to do like a briefing with people on this board and, um, for any folks who are referred to the housing vouchers, um, that they be able to attend a briefing so that they have awareness of how they can use the vouchers for themselves. Um, I think self determination and self empowerment are critical for, for, for this particular program and for all things related, um, to, to housing and human services. Um, and also I wanna make sure that CEA does not use a prioritization tool that has known to produce racial inequities and, um, the, the ISPADAT should no longer be applied at all, at all. That I'm very, 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 um, concerned about that. And I don't know how they're prioritizing people right now. I think there's a COVID, uh, medical vulnerability assessment, but um, I want to make sure that CEA takes direction from the board. Um, because I, as a case manager who's received referrals from CEA, the information's not always accurate. They, it doesn't capture the, the vulnerability of all the families. Um, and, and CEA is a subset of the continuum of care. So I wanna make sure that we're all on the same page when we do prioritization and when we do, um, ensure that people are matched with the vouchers, that, uh, that that's kept in mind.
Okay. Thanks very much, Tamara. I, I appreciate the, the, um, the request for a briefing, you know, a voucher briefing and I'll, I'll talk to the, to the, to the housing authorities about that. You know, typically those are offered to people who get a voucher, but there's, you know, I'm, there's, there's no reason why that couldn't be something that, that we could ask them to do. Well, I mean, see, it may be even the kind of thing that we could do from have them do it as a web thing and then on their, you know, it's on their site and they could, you know, anybody could watch it or something like that. Um, so, um, and then with regard to the, just prioritization through CEA, they, they are not using this but out right now. They are using administrative and health data and COVID prioritization. And I think that the, the uh, uh, racial equity outcomes have been, uh, consistently better. And, you know, I think the challenges with this but had have come up nationally. Um, you know, it was the only tool that folks had at for a while. That is, you know, at this point, it's, it's challenges are pretty well known. And I think we, you know, we, we as a community need to, to use a better tool. Right now we're using administrative data and, and COVID prioritization, which is, like I said, it was, it's doing better. Um, we do have another meeting on the seventh. Um, you know, so there was a request for, for folks to meet again prior to that meeting. Is that, is that a general sense from folks?
Well, yeah, cause we didn't come up with the consensus today.
All right. Let's, um, let's circulate. We will circulate for another time prior to the seventh. Um, and, you know, I just wanna flag that I personally will not be here the end of next week and the beginning of the week after that. Um, my daughter's getting married, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna be doing that. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I'm very excited. Um, so all this change happening, but, um, but I will, um, so I will ask Maria to help us, uh, to circulate and try to, try to find something that folks can, can participate in. Okay. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, hopefully sooner than later, because we all again, wanna offer this to the public. Um, and again, I'd like the public link, uh, in my email when that goes live. Um, it's not something that I can capture off the website to get out to people.
Great.
Um, and so.
It's actually not true. There's a capability on the website and I'll be happy to share that information with you. There's a blog.
Oh, yeah. Cause I couldn't get it to work. So it might just be, you know, I work in a funny place, so.
No, it's okay. You can sign up at the bottom of the website. It says follow blog via email. And every time the website is updated, we tend to post a blog about it and let people know that that's happened. And then that will automatically email that blog posting, i.e. the, the attendee information out to you. So I'll, I can share that information with you in that coming week. Sure thing.
Okay. Um, uh, Mark, we're, we're at time, but Marvin, what do you, uh, won't, you, you had your hand up?
Just really quick on emails, uh, are we gonna ever get set up with our government email? So.
Great question. I'm sure you just need to have patience. They're working on it.
Oh, well, that, that's the question. Are.
It's a totally, yeah, it's a totally valid question. And I, you know, I, I wish that we had like, you know, a robust set of like, you know, historical policies and procedures on doing this. So let me, let me caucus with, um, with our small team and, and get back to you. Okay. I, but I, I hear you and I appreciate the, the request. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
I appreciate you all and I really, I thank you for your input, input. And like, there's no hard question. Like this is all stuff that we need to wrestle with. So I, I really thank you for your, for your feedback. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Have a good day.
Thanks, thanks everyone. All right.
Bye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Happy Father's Day, everybody.